Have your attention, please. We'll be starting up shortly. Good evening and welcome to the Lowell Planning Board for Monday, June 5th, 2023. The first matter on the agenda is the minute meetings for April 20th, 2023. I spoke with staff today. They told me they were still perfecting the meetings and would have them ready for the next meeting. So I would request that we make them. I'll make a motion that we continue the minute meeting, minute of the meeting from April 20th till June 22nd.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
All in the favor, say aye?
Aye.
Chair votes yes, and those are continued. We received two requests for continuances this evening. Let me start with the first request. The first request is for Christmas Ave. This is the site plan review. Land Smart LLC has applied to the Lowell Planning Board seeking site plan review approval to construct an operative veterans education and housing facility at the above address. The proposed facility will include classrooms, meeting space, and associated office and 12 temporary resident units. The subject property is located in a traditional single-family zoning district. The proposal requires site plan review approval per section 11.4 to construct greater than three residential units. We received a email last Wednesday from Douglas Duchesne indicating that they requested continuance because Mr. Jenkins, who was the builder of the project, was having surgery and could not be present for tonight's meeting. I did receive a call today from Mr. Jenkins. He apologized that he cannot be here this evening due to the fact that he was recovering from surgery and indicated that he tried to reach out to as many people as possible to let them know that they were requesting a continuance. He indicated that they have met with the residents on at least one occasion since the last time they were before us back in April, and he's hoping that he can continue to work with the residents on the matter. And again, he apologized for not being present this evening. So the request was to continue it to the July 17th meeting. At that time, I was assured that they would be ready to go forward and not request another continuance so they would not have to inconvenience anybody who had shown up for requests for the public hearing. So having that said, must request to the board for the continuance for 21 Christmas Ave to our July 17th meeting.
I make a motion to continue the case to July 17?
Mr. Chairman, I abstain, not voting on the, on the issue, but so I will abstain on that vote.
Okay. So I will second the motion. So the matter will be continued to July 17th. I apologize for anybody who came down here this evening. They tried to reach out to everybody. So I told them I would not be happy if they come in looking for another continuance. So hopefully we'll be going forward on July 17th. And I apologize on behalf of the board for any inconvenience, but most of my requests for delay. So that was continued to July 17th. We also received the request this afternoon for a site plan review at 3:30 Princeton Boulevard. This is Edson Don Santos has applied to Lowell Planning Board seeking definitive subdivision approval at the above address. The applicant seeks to split the existing lot into two lots and construct a new two-family structure. The subject property is located in a traditional two-family zoning district. The proposal requires definitive subdivision approval for a waiver for a minimum furniture requirement. Vice Chair, Mr. Vichette, was at the site yesterday and noticed that the appropriate sign was not posted. I was at the site today and noticed that the appropriate sign was not posted. We received a letter today requesting a continuance. I was there understanding that the zoning board of appeals matter was continued. So they were under the impression that the planning board matter would also be continued. That's not the way we do business, but since the fact that their notice has not been required and they've indicated they will repost for the notice, they're requesting a continuance. So at this point in time, I will make a motion to continue the matter to July 17th.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
All in the favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I apologize for anybody who came up this evening for this matter on July 17th, but without the proper notice, the board would not be allowed to go forward. Moving along on the agenda, we have a site plan review and a special permit, which is 125 Perry Street. ZR Development Group LLC has applied to Lowell Planning Board and Lowell Zoning Board of Appeals for site plan review, special parent permit and variance approval to demolish an existing vacant structure and construct a new 24-unit residential structure at the above address. The property is located in a traditional mixed-use zoning district. It requires site plan review approval under section 11.4 to construct more than three residential units, a special permit approval under section 11.3 in article 12.1E for the proposed use. The project also requires variance approval from the zoning board of appeals under 6.1 for relief from the off-street parking requirement under section 5.1 for relief from the lot area per dwelling unit and usable open space per dwelling unit requirement. Before we get started, Counselor, is it my understanding that you've already got approval from the zoning board of appeals?
We have, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Thank you very much. So at this point in time, if we'll start with the applicant, if we could, please, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening to all. For the record, my name is John Geary of Geary &amp; Geary LLP, 32 Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm here tonight representing the applicant and the developer, ZR Development Group LLC. With me tonight is Jim Zorvis. Jim is one of the principals of ZR Development Group. We have Mark O'Hara of O'Hara Engineering, the engineer for the project. We have Angie Verge of Angie Verge Landscape Design, the landscape designer, and we have Brenda Mchenzie, the designer for the project. So that's the introduction to our team. The property is currently owned by Praise Tabernacle Worship Church. My client has the property under agreement. Subject property is located at 125 Perry Street in the traditional mixed-use zoning district. The parcel consists of approximately 15,408 square feet of land with an existing three-story building located on the property. If you recall, we were before this board back several months ago, I believe it was November of 2022, for a pre-hearing. And at that time, our, the developer's intention was to repurpose the existing building into 30 residential units based on an existing, based on a design that was done at that point in time. However, after further investigation of the building, the applicant came to the conclusion that it would make for a better development to demolish the existing building and do ground-up construction on a new building. So the application before you tonight is to demolish the existing building, ground-up construction of a four-story building, which will consist of parking on the ground floor and then three floors of residential units for a total of 24 residential units. By demolishing the existing building and doing that ground-up construction, among other significant improvements or benefits to the project, the applicant's able to move the building back from the street. As the property currently exists, the existing building is right on the sidewalk. This will allow us to provide significant landscaping to the front of the, of the building. As the chairman mentioned, we're here tonight before you seeking a special permit pursuant to 11.3. We're also seeking site plan review pursuant to 11.4 of the city zoning ordinance. We were before the zoning board on May 22nd. At that hearing, we were seeking variances for relief that we had requested. We had also, we were also seeking special permit pursuant to 12.6G for the accessory use of the adjacent land as additional parking. The adjacent land is owned by the trustees of the townhouses at Conquered Crossing. That applicant, the applicant and the abbot have been in discussions relative to terms which will likely result in an easement for purposes of using 12,038 square feet of their land as additional parking where we'll create 16 parking spaces. That land is located directly behind 125 Perry Street and is not being used in any manner whatsoever by the condominium. The area is clearly depicted on the site plan, and Mark will review that aspect of the site plan with you shortly. In addition to my application, my narrative, and the, we've provided the board with a full set of elevations and floor plans as well as detailed landscape plan. Those, the application, the narrative provide a pretty good explanation of how this proposal meets the requirements of the special permit and for site plan review. I'm sure that you have visited the site, but just to give you some context to the neighborhood, Perry Street is a one-way street running from Rogers Street to Pond Street. At Pond Street, it becomes a two-way street till it ends on Andover Street. The southwesterly side of Perry Street is mostly commercial use with National Grid being a large landowner in that particular area. The residential units in the neighborhood are mostly single, two-family, and multifamily properties, and there's a good mix of neighborhood businesses in the neighborhood as well. We feel that adding this component of residential housing, multifamily residential housing to this stretch of Perry Street will be a tremendous improvement to the neighborhood. With regard to off-street parking, the applicant's required to provide 48 spaces for this proposal. The applicant's proposing 47 off-street parking spaces, and as I mentioned, we were before the ZBA on the 22nd. We did receive relief for that one parking space that we needed. With regard to the DPD comments, which were prepared on April 14th prior to the cyber attack, most of those comments are self-explanatory. However, we've had a chance to address any concerns in those comments because of the delay in the meetings here. So in reviewing my comments, I'll focus on the comments of concern. Comment number two mentions that we're missing a couple of elevations. We have since supplemented our submitted to the board, and we have provided you with all elevations. So you should have that in your possession. Brenda will review those as she goes through her presentation. Comment number five suggests that we should push the building back so that the sidewalk can be ADA compliant and so that we can provide more landscaping in front of the building, especially in the form of shade trees. So we have addressed that concern. We have pushed the building back, and the landscape plan provides very good detail, and we are able to provide the ADA compliant sidewalk. Comment number six suggests that trade shade trees along the streetscape would be very important. We were, again, we were able to accomplish that by pushing the building back. Comment number seven indicates the staff believes that the proposal was a vast improvement to the neighborhood. We agree with that wholeheartedly. We've also reviewed the design plan of comments, and I believe that between my comments and what Mark will go through with his presentation, we have addressed those comments. The transportation engineer indicated that, that we're providing sufficient off-street parking, but she would like to see the southern driveway to be marked for egress only. We show that on our plan and have no, that's the intent. And as I mentioned, we, we received our relief we requested from the ZBA with, with two conditions. The first condition is to install signage for ingress and egress of the parking area. So we, we were happy to agree with that condition and will do that. The second condition was interior parking space number nine will have to be reconfigured to, to be more accessible with the bike storage moved to another location within the garage. Mark looked at that, and he will address that. And I guess lastly, before I turn the presentation over to the rest of the team, I'd just like to point out to the board that, that Jim and his partner have just completed a significant redevelopment at 116 128 Fletcher Street, which was the repurposing of the Kelly Sheep Meadow building into multifamily housing. The end product was spectacular. I don't know if you've had a chance to go buy the property, but it's, they really did a spectacular job there. They're also close to completion of another ground-up mixed-use development at 135 Chelmsford Street, which is coming out great, and they'll soon be starting the redevelopment of the St. Louis Elementary School. So the purpose in bringing these ongoing and past developments up is to just point out that the developer has a vested interest in the city. The developer also has an excellent reputation within the city because of the work that the developer does, the quality of work that the developer does. And I'll also, I guess, point out that we have been working with the abbot at 117 Perry Street, which is a similarly looking building to this building. The, the attorney, the abbot and the council for the abbot, the attorney was not able to make it tonight, but there, that building has its water line running through 125 Perry Street cutting over into this building. So we have agreed, the applicant has agreed to run a sewer line direct, a water line directly from the street into this building. That's noted on the site plan. The, the legal council for the abbot also has no problem with me making the representation tonight, that they have no objections to this proposal. He was unable to make it tonight, as I mentioned. So with that, I'll turn the presentation over to Mark, and then you, you'll hear from the rest of the team.
Counsel, I hate to interrupt, but
Go right ahead.
You mentioned we have all the elevations, and I always comment, I haven't seen any of the street facade at all in any of our areas.
Yeah, you should have everything. It's right on the drawing, on the
Yeah, we don't have a copy.
Tripod, the top one.
Yeah.
Everything would have been circulated well before the, the April meeting. I know the, the zoning board had everything.
I don't know, Counsel, we don't have it. And it was, and it was just, I think you uploaded one big package that was on our, our site that came down, but, and then even this was, the chairman picked this up today, so we have, you know, full-size set.
Yeah.
And this is all there is.
So that's it?
Yeah. Understood.
It's part of the original submission? They've been, sorry, they've been revised since, and we didn't, we don't have a hard copy of the revised?
So we didn't, we're seeing it for the first time, Counselor, as a board.
I thought that I circulated it to the planning board.
I haven't seen, I haven't seen it.
Yeah. Well, I mean, we, so it is on the tripod. That's, that's the, that is the front of the streetscape, if you will. Yeah.
That would be helpful. Appreciate that.
I know we had some issue with the city here, the cyber attacks. I know that handicapped TPW to getting some stuff to us.
Yes, we did.
And I know, I mean, even some of the communication that we asked for took a little while, a little longer to get to us, and so.
Yeah, the cyber attack has been very problematic.
Oh, this is helpful. I'm seeing this for the first time.
I apologize for that.
Yeah, apologies if that didn't get to you. I meant to forward it to you, and they did. They have, they sent this a month ago. So I meant to circulate that to the planning board, and if I didn't, I apologize.
And at this point, Fran, you may have sent it a month ago with all the emails going back and forth, but I, I don't think collectively we've seen it, so. Okay. Go ahead. I'm sorry, Counsel. You mentioned that, and I just wanted to make it clear.
And we can go through that, you know, the
So you could take a little bit more time to go through it. I'd appreciate it.
We will. Thank you.
Thank you, John. For the record, Mark O'Hara, O'Hara Engineering, 21 Van Hooch Drive, Lowell, Mass. I am the civil engineer representing the developer. I'd like, I would love to just carry on giving you guys an opportunity to review the materials before you, but engineering really is pretty straightforward with this site. It's an existing site. When we do tear down the building, it actually makes it easier for us to develop. One challenge that we have is that the existing grades, we're gonna have to match them from both sides, you know, the abbot at the left and the abbot at the right. But that being said, we are, as John had mentioned, we are extending the pavement out back. There is a natural steep slope back there, but we're gonna be expanding the level, level area for the parking and installing a six-foot-high retaining wall that I believe is about 210 feet long. So it's gonna be relatively flat. What we're gonna do underneath that parking area is that's where we're gonna have our stormwater controls. So I met with the Lowell Regional Wastewater Utility. That was, it actually was over a month ago, and we discussed this site. They had some concerns about the sizing of the system. We're going with a cultech underground recharge system that will capture the clean runoff from the roof and also from the pavement. All of that stormwater go, will go to the rear of the site. That cultech chambered system was designed for the one-inch of runoff rule, but we bumped that up just based on the review that we had with the Lowell Regional Wastewater to the one-and-a-half inch rule. So we expanded the size of that system by 50%. As for existing utilities, we're gonna try to maintain and use the existing facilities, water. There is a Siamese fire connection out front, but, you know, if it needs to be upgraded to meet current code, or if we find that it's insufficient in size or quality, there will be new connections. John had mentioned there's a shared water feed to this unit as well as the building, too, would be the right-hand side of the plan. It's 117 Perry Street, and that would be separated, and they would be provided their new water connection. Another issue that comes up a lot now, and it's sometimes can be a challenge in certain situation where you're salvaging an existing building, is when they pave the roads, they kept paving up, and the reveal on a curb becomes very short. And it's difficult at times because you've got an existing building. We don't face that anymore because we're going with the new construction. So the new sidewalk will meet city standards. That was a requirement or a request from the city, and we'll be resetting the curbing to provide that six-inch reveal. Other than that, utilities will all be underground. I mentioned the retaining wall that's out back, one-and-a-half inch rule. There was one change to the plan that you may not be aware of. You wouldn't even pick up on it unless I had brought it to your attention. This is a result of going before the planning board. They requested that number nine parking spot be slid over as much as possible. It's at the entrance when you first come in. Negotiating that turn and, and going into that space would have been very difficult. So we had the availability to slide it over by about five feet and help it be, or help people negotiate that turn better. So that's the only change that you see in that plan over there. Other than that, yeah, there hasn't been any, any changes. So I'm just gonna hand this off to Angie, who's gonna go over the landscaping, and particularly in the front and the back of the building.
Thank you, sir.
And good evening. My name is Angie Verge. I am a certified landscape designer and state-certified horticulturist with Angie Verge Landscape Design in Carlisle. And I prepared the landscape plan for 125 Perry Street. The intention of the landscape plan, do we, do we have it up? Thank you. The intention of the landscape plan is to thoroughly revegetate the site through the addition of sidewalk planting areas, the restoration of native shade trees along the back of the property, and the inclusion of green lawn space to accommodate snow storage.
Can you put knees a little closer? Thanks. Thank you very much. Usually we have more members sitting there, but since it's only three of us, we'll take it. Thank you. That's excellent. That's excellent. Yeah.
The proposed
Not insulted by that, by the way. Thank you.
The proposed plan includes 10 landscape-sized street trees at or greater than two to two-and-a-half inch caliper. There's a ratio of approximately one tree per five parking spaces. All 10 trees are native to the northeastern U.S., seven of which exceed 40 feet in height at maturity, such as red maples and pin oaks. There will also be three ornamental trees at the rear of the parking lot. Those will have a maximum growth of 25 to 30 feet, which will develop a smaller root system protecting the integrity of that built wall, retaining wall. The retaining wall will be topped with a solid panel fence, six foot in height. The fence will act as a safety barrier, also acting as screening for the abutting properties. The fence will continue as a full enclosure for the dumpster pad, and the slopes on either side of the retaining walls will be planted with low sumac shrubs for erosion control, and any disturbed areas around the retaining wall will be loomed and seeded. The plan locates a designated snow storage area as an eight-foot-deep lawn strip that runs the length of the parking area. A large mixed shrub planting will be layered in front of the fence, providing natural aesthetic to the parking area as well as habitat value. The plant beds at the front of the building contain four narrow red maples and a mixed shrub planting to help soften the building facade. Under the windows, the plants will stay in the three-foot height range, while the shrubs along the larger wall face will reach five to six feet in height. The lighting plan includes lighting fixtures that are included. There are line voltage area lights on 15-foot posts. The lamps are dark, dark sky compliant, energy-efficient LEDs, and the lights will provide safety lighting to the parking area, and there's also one at the trash enclosure. Wall-mounted lights will be placed above the garage entrances and exits. And I thank you for your time, and welcome any questions or comments.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Brenda Mchenzie. I'm the owner and designer of Mchenzie Drafting and Design located in Methuen, Massachusetts for the last 41 years. As mentioned, our proposed building is located at 125 Perry Street, and it consists of 24 residential units on three levels of living space with parking at street level. The main entry of the Perry Street building is located in the rear of the building, adjacent to the parking lot, so it provides off-street entry for the residents, guests, and deliveries. And there are two additional entries facing Perry Street for residents. The 24 residents in Perry Street building are a combination of one- and two-bedroom living spaces ranging from approximately 550 square feet to 850 square feet. There are 12 two-bedroom, two baths, six two-bedroom, one bath, and six one-bedroom, one bath to allow for different living situations for residents. In additions, the units are well-appointed and feature kitchen areas open to the living space and private baths and laundry facilities for each unit. A special feature of the residences is a private balcony for each unit. Each of the 24 units have a balcony, so that provides six balconies on each of the four sides of the building, which allows each living space to open to the outdoors and become part of the surrounding neighborhood. So I know that you just received that package tonight, so if you have any questions on the design, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So the addition of this six-and-a-half million dollar multifamily residential building into this neighborhood will, which has a significant commercial look to it right now, will be a significant enhancement to the neighborhood without any detrimental impacts at all. The project aligns with the master, with the city's master plan and sustainable Lowell 2025 Housing Choice Plan. We believe that we meet the criteria for issuance of the special permit and site plan approval, and we request approval tonight. But considering you're looking at the plans for the first time, we're sure you'll have plenty of questions, and we're glad to, to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you, Counselor.
You.
At this point in time, we'll turn it over to the public. If anybody here to see and like to speak in favor of this matter, anybody in favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none? Anybody in opposition? 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 Hearing none? I'll turn it over to the board members. Before I turn it over, I just have a couple of questions myself. I definitely liked the color of the building and how you mixed up the colors.
Yeah.
I think it really breaks it up, and I like how they jets in and comes out a little bit, all the balconies, as indicated. Yeah, instead of just being, you know, one building, one, one big color all the way down, it just, I think, really breaks it up. It's very attractive. What's the materials on the outside anyways? What's it made out of? I mean, is it vinyl or is it?
Vinyl.
Okay.
Yeah.
But it's very nice. I like the way the color scheme goes and how it's not just a flat building.
It's got some character to it.
And everything, yeah. I think the architectural design is very nice. And I'll come back to my comments later, but I'll start off with any of the board members. If Trevor or Caleb wanna chime in, whichever.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Sure.
First of all, I think, like, some of my questions were answered even in the, the short presentations. I know the retaining wall in the back, the six-foot retaining wall, you're gonna have a fence on the top of that retaining wall. I, I'm just trying to get a, a feel for, are you eliminating the pitch altogether? Because obviously it's steep, or is it still going to be? And again, this is the first time I see this landscaping plan as well. So I do like the steep, the street trees, which is what was in the, the comment letter. I mean, I think you addressed most of the concerns that staff had. I'm just trying to get a feel for the site.
The, the site is essentially flat. The site is essentially flat. We are, we'll probably have to bring in a little bit of fill there and then retain it.
Yeah.
And-
So even with that retaining wall, you're basically eliminating most of that pitch that's back there?
We are, yes.
Okay, all right. And yeah, no, I know pre-application you were looking at trying to refurbish that building, but I think you probably made the right decision. This is going to be-
No question.
-a much more attractive building.
The improvements we're able to make to this proposal by demolishing that building are substantial.
Yeah, the building that's-
How old's the building? I'm saying it's- Too old.
Too old, yeah. Why don't you stop hooking up wires to old wires?
Yeah, right. No, I mean, but you know, in addition to the condition of the building, just the location of the building, right on top of the sidewalk, you know, if you look down Perry Street from either Andover Street or Rogers Street, it just sticks out at you. It's right on top of the sidewalk and, you know, looking at that, the front elevation, I mean, the change is going to be impressive.
Yeah, no matter what you would have done to that building, you would not have been able to-
No.
The building to the right, that's really set back.
Say that again.
The building to the right of that is set back.
Yeah, it is. Yes, right. The 117 is set back significantly.
Did I hear correctly, are there bike racks in here?
In the garage level, yes, ground floor.
Okay. Could you just point out where those are?
Yes.
That would be great.
Yes.
Okay. Oh geez, how many do you have? Just everybody in the building can have a bike rack. How many are there?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, so yeah. Geez, they're really, wow, all right, wow. Okay. I didn't even count them, so that was, wow, all right. No, I think you did a great job, other than doing rooftop gardens, which we talked about on the original building.
So, yeah, so, I mean, that's still on the wish list.
Okay.
But, you know, we have to see how the budget comes in. Okay.
And we added decks for every unit, so it-
Yeah.
Jim Zorbus, CEO of Development. We didn't forget that note. We just depend, everything's going to be electric in the building. So depending on how all the mechanical shape up up there, if we can dedicate a space, we will. But just to make sure that we were able to provide something, we gave each unit that little, you know, deck area off the unit. But I do think that a rooftop deck would be a great enhancement overlooking maybe the Concord River.
Sure, no, I really-
So we didn't forget it, and we hope to do it.
Yeah, no, like I said, I occasionally throw some crazy things out there, but they do make sense.
Some of them stick, you mean?
Some of them stick, yeah. No, I think you did a great job with the concerns and, yeah, no, I think you made the wise decision to take the building down, so.
I agree.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome, Mr. Chairman. Caleb, any questions?
I think it's great design. You got the bike racks that, and you got enough parking. Close enough that CBA agrees that-
One space.
I do have a comment about, I see that the first floor is parking, but like landscaping solvents up the facade, but like, I feel like the entrances on the street side could be a little, and like accentuate a little bit more. I understand the main entrance is toward the parking lot, but like, I mean, are there going to be some signage? Because I see it like you have overhung lights across, so the entrance is out like, it seems like they are back doors in a way, which I feel like could be, oh, the other one.
Oh, okay, yeah.
The two doors. I know there is going to be trees next, you know, next to the doors, but anyway, that maybe a different lighting or like some architectural features that can make them a little bit more-
So the, it's not all, we have some privacy slats there that we're proposing. I think they're pretty well depicted on that elevation. We feel that that, together with the landscaping in the front of the building, will have a, you know, a great look to it. You won't necessarily, you won't necessarily see that lower level, if you will, the garage level. You'll see, you know, your eyes, I think, will be attracted to the upper three floors as opposed to the first floor.
Okay. That's my observation. But I understand there are a lot of designs that go into it.
Right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have many more comments except for, like I said, I like the architectural design. I'm satisfied with the parking. I see you've got plenty of the snow storage in the rear, which I'm happy with. I think it's a good-looking building. I really do. I think they'll, like, as we indicated, being back away from the street that's currently there now, much better-looking design. I have nothing further on my comments. I think it's good project. So we have to have two votes for a site plan and a special permit, correct?
Correct. Okay, Chairman.
Just a quick question. Did we get any comments from stormwater management on this?
Mr. O'Hair said he met with storm-
Yeah.
I'm there, right?
Did we get any?
Mark, you met with stormwater. Was there any questions or comments on that? Any concerns that we have to?
The only two items that came up was initially, did you design it to the one inch or the one and a half inch?
Right.
I designed it to the one-inch storm, but they said, can you design it to the one and a half? I said, it's pretty straightforward and simple. I'm just adding another row of those CULTEC chambers. So we were able to accommodate that, and we said that before we start any work or anything. We'll go out there and we'll do some test pits. So that is still scheduled to be done, just to see what the soils are that are out there. I'm sure it's filled. We don't know what we're going to get. But regardless, that material that's there is going to be coming out for the infiltration chambers. So what the soil is doesn't impact our stormwater design.
So either way, Counselor, you need a stormwater permit anyways?
Right, and so we're happy to make the-
Conditional?
Conditional on stormwater permit, absolutely.
Yeah, I mean, if you don't get that, then the project doesn't go forward anyways, regardless of what we do, right?
Agreed.
Yeah. Without the stormwater, no water, no project, yeah. I'll make a motion to approve this site plan with the condition of approval of the stormwater permit.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
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 The motions carried. Three in favor, none against. Special permit? I'll make a motion, we approve the special permit with the approval of the stormwater permit.
I'll second the motion.
Motion made by myself, second by Caleb. All in favor, say aye.
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 All in favor, so we have three in favor for the special permit, three in favor for the site plan. Both motions carry, both are approved. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Good luck, gentlemen. Wish you well. Your project on Chancery Street's come along pretty good. I go by there a few times.
It's almost there.
Yeah, last time, I have many in over a month, but I can tell-
Thirty days. We just pulled back the sidewalk.
Oh, did you? Okay.
So we're going to pour that hopefully Thursday and then-
Good.
Almost there.
Yeah, I think it was over a month ago when I was there, and I'm like, wow, that's coming along.
Yeah, very good.
Well, good luck, thank you. Good luck with that.
Thank you.
Wish you well. You're welcome, sir. You do good work.
Come on. Thank you.
Have a good night. Yep. Okay, next matter on the agenda is a public shade tree hearing for 30 Gorm Street. In accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 87.5, in Chapter 260 of the Lowell Code of Ordinance, the Lowell Planning Board will hold the public hearing to have all interested persons about the proposed removal of one locust tree approximately 12-inch located at 30 Gorm Street. The removal of the tree is necessary in order to perform tasks involving the construction project, including granite curb removal and rest and ADA-compliant sidewalk construction. Anybody here for the public shade tree for DPW? Anyone here for Department of Public Works? No? The second time on our agenda, and nobody here from DPW. Well, is anybody here from DPW on 221 Moore Street? No? No? Second time, no show. Anybody here from DPW on East Merrimack Street and Brown Street intersection? No? No? Second time, no show. Anybody here from DPW for a shade tree hearing on 5449 and 74 Highland Avenue? No one here from DPW? No? Second time, no show. Fran, have you had any communication with DPW? I know this was on the agenda back in April, and Board is willing to go forward. I mean, I don't see much, really, anything contentious about many of these. I've been up to Highland Ave twice, and I know they're getting ready to pave the street, but they can't do it until they remove the tree.
So we did not receive confirmation that the postings were posted on trees per Mass General Law requirements at least a week before, so-
A week, okay.
-we wouldn't be able to hear this item and vote on it anyway. They, the DPW have been told again that that is part of the requirement. We did run a legal ad successfully for today's meeting, so, yeah, if the Board chooses to continue it, then the continuance would be the notice that it would be continued to a further meeting. But we have communicated the requirements to DPW multiple times.
I did happen to go down Highland Ave today when I was on my way to Princeton Boulevard for a site visit. I noticed that they had the signs on the trees, but I don't know how long they were there, obviously. I did notice them today. There was three of them on each one of the trees, but obviously, I don't know when they went up, so. So I know our next meeting is 6/22. We have a pretty full agenda, but if we put them off at that meeting, do you think DP, DT, excuse me, Department of Public Works would be able to comply by then if we communicate with them, or we don't know?
So-
I know if they're trying to pave the street, I don't want to be holding them up.
Right, so-
I know I talked with two of the neighbors who are pretty anxious about they're getting it repaved.
Sure.
In favor of the tree removal.
Right. So it was advertised now properly. It's been in the newspaper and posted on the trees, so, and I, there are other requirements that I completed that are all set. So really, it's just a matter of having a representative from DPW attend a meeting and answer any questions that the Board has.
Sure.
So that's where we're at in terms of the tree hearings.
So I know we have the full agenda, but I don't anticipate these taking too long. So if we made a motion, put them off for the June 22nd, would that be appropriate? Or that'd be too shot in time? Because I know June 19th is the holiday, so we don't meet in two weeks from tonight.
Right.
So we go to that Thursday instead? Do you think that would make-
Yeah, I don't really know. I mean, it's up to you.
Yeah, I know you can't speak for other people, that's different.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah, communication has been very spotty, so.
Yeah.
I mean, we can put it on, Mr. Chairman, and at the very least, we can continue it again if they're not, but it's just-
Yeah. So if we continue, could you try to reach out again?
Yes.
Let them know that we put it over again, and the Board is willing to go forward?
We are having discussions with them about trees in general-
Okay.
-beyond this issue, so.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I don't want to put you in the spotlight for something that's not your responsibility, so.
Right.
Okay, I'll make a motion that we continue 30 Gorm Street public shade tree hearing to June 22nd.
Second that, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Obviously, Chair vote yes. That matter continues. I'll make a motion to continue the public shade tree hearing, 221 Moore Street to 6/2223.
Second that, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair vote yes. That motion carries. I'll make a motion to continue a public shade tree hearing, East Merrimack Street and Brown Street intersection to 6/2323.
Second that, Mr. Chairman.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair vote yes. Motion carries. Make a motion to continue the public shade tree hearing for 49, 54, and 79 Highland Ave to June 23rd.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Chair vote yes. Motion carries. That matter continues to June 23rd. Okay, moving along on the agenda. Site plan review and special permit, 45 Concord Street. Manuel and Elizabeth Silva have applied for site plan review, special permit, and variance approval to construct four townhouse-style residence at the above address. The property is located in the traditional mixed-use zoning district and requires site plan review under Section 11.4 to construct more than three residential units, and a special permit for Section 11.3 and Article 12.1D for the proposed use from the Planning Board. The project also requires variance approvals for relief from the lot area per dwelling unit requirement under Section 5.1 from the zoning Board of Appeals. May we hear from the applicant, please?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And again, for the record, my name is John Geary of Geary &amp; Geary LLP, 32 Church Street, Lowell, Mass. I'm here tonight representing the applicants, Manuel and Elizabeth Silva. Manny and Elizabeth are with us tonight, as is Brian Malisi, the engineer for the project, and Phil Tebow, the architect for the project. As they're setting up their tripods here, I'll get, go through my presentation. As the Chairman mentioned, this application involves a request for a special permit pursuant to 11.3 and 12.1, as well as site plan review pursuant to 11.4. The applicants intend to develop this vacant lot at 45 Concord Street, which consists of approximately 7,669 square feet of land. It's a vacant lot. They're intending to develop the parcel into four townhouse-style residential units, properties located in the traditional mixed-use zoning district. Subject properties located in the same neighborhood as the 125 Perry Street project that we just heard. And as I mentioned, that neighborhood is a mix of single, two-family, multifamily properties with neighborhood business scattered about. This particular stretch of Concord Street is, runs from, is one way from Andover Street to Pond Street, has a significant commercial look to it. The westerly side of Concord Street is currently all business, and the easterly side of the street is, has a mix of mixed use, including multifamily and neighborhood businesses. The applicant also owns the abutting property to the south and west at 45 Concord, 45 Concord Street, and owns and operates Silver's Market on Perry Street, which is just below this site. They also live at 70 Concord Street, which is across the street from 45 Concord Street. The addition of these four townhouse-style residential units will go a long way towards softening the commercial look to this stretch of Concord Street. With regard to the parking, the applicant is proposing eight on-street, off-street parking spaces on-site, and three off-street parking spaces on the abutting lot, which it owns below this property. The two tandem spaces to the north of, the north side of the property, which are depicted on the site plan, will be assigned to the unit closest to that, to that, to those spaces, which we believe will be Unit 4. The lot, the lot where we're proposing the three additional spaces is, again, property of Silver's Market and owned by Manny and Elizabeth Silva. That is used for storage right now, but their intent is to improve that area for additional parking for their business, and they can, are able to allocate three parking spaces for the residents of this property. Those three parking spaces will be identified by signage on the site. The improvements to the Perry Street lot will coincide with the improvements to this site and will be available once the residential units are available for occupancy. All the comments from DPD were positive. I believe I've addressed all of those comments, but if the Board has any follow-up, of course we can clarify. We were before the zoning board on May 22nd for this project as well, for relief for lot area per dwelling unit. That relief was granted, but while we were at the meeting, one of the members suggested that we push this building back a few more feet, so that we're able to provide for some more landscape and shade trees in the front of this building. more landscape and shade trees in the front of this building. Actually, they wanted four shade trees along the frontage of the property. So we were comfortable doing that, provided that the ZBA also granted us relief for the rear yard setback, because we were pushing it closer to the rear property line. The board had no problem with that, so they ultimately granted us relief for lot area per dwelling unit and rear yard setback. So they, they did have three conditions. So the applicant shall plant four additional trade shade trees along the frontage of the property. Signage shall be placed on Perry Street, on the Perry Street parking lot, identifying the parking for 45 Concord Street residents, and the tandem parking to the north side of the site should be assigned to the residents of Unit 4, which I've mentioned. So at this point, I'll turn the presentation over to Brian. He'll go through the site plan, then Philip will go through the architectural aspects of the property, of the project. Thank you.
Just a quick question. When you say Unit 4, is it to the right or to the left?
It's facing the property to the right.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. Sure, absolutely sure. Yeah, no, go right ahead.
There's two tandem spots here.
Yeah, okay.
Also, it's referring to, we have this kind of another little back, it's Unit 4.
Gotcha.
This brown building here is in Silver's Market.
Yep.
This is the area where this, we have three visible parking spots, most of which are in the cave.
Okay.
Already, there's a six-spot parking, proposed parking here for the neighborhood. The building began to show here now, it's almost right on the parking lot, the frontage, as well as the sideline.
And that's on like, on the corner, right? So it's to the left of that, exactly where you posted your sign, it's to your left. Gotcha. Thank you.
So in this drawing of that, they introduced myself.
Well, that's okay.
This does, the building, the proposed buildings, again, we slid back five feet.
Gotcha.
Typically, we had a 20-foot required rear offset. And we need that relief, or the government, as council said, we pushed that back to be able to put the shade trees to the front of the lot, and then it's located at the rear of the lot, just to provide some landscaping, push some discussion, and the building back before the trees.
Thank you very much. That was very helpful. So we can follow you a little better now that we got the groundwork.
For the record, my name is Brian Malisi with Haley Wood, with the civil engineers on the project. And again, I probably will be very brief. Council did a very good job of kind of doing my job for me, telling you what was going on on this site. I will add circa 2011, the existing building on this site was razed, so it was hooked up to the municipal sewer. Our hope is to try to resurrect that service and utilize that. We may have to do some cammering at the time and work with engineering and DPW to do that. The four town, four townhouse units will be, will be provided a sprinkler system, so again, we'll be working with engineering. I have the water department to figure out exactly how to plum that. The property owners would like to provide separate services, domestic services for each building, in a sprinkler system or fire service to take care of that. So very briefly, I touched on stormwater, I mean, I talked on sanitary sewer and domestic water. From a stormwater standpoint, in the largest parking area, we have a subsurface recharge system designed underneath that. The Caltech units, very similar to what the previous project had talked about. I've had some initial contacts and conversations with the stormwater team. They did want us to design for that 1.5-inch rainstorm, because we don't really have an overflow to this system. It's a fairly tight site, fairly small site. We were able to do that. Again, the three things the council touched on through the ZBA, we moved the building back five feet. We provided a signage for the three spots off of Perry Street that would be signed accordingly, saying that for 45 Perry Street parking only, and the tandem parking to be dedicated to Unit Number 4. And I think the better part of the presentation is the architectural, so I'll turn that over to Mr. Tebow.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the planning board. For the record, Philip Tebow from Philip Tebow Architects at 1168 Lake UAB in Drake at Massachusetts. What we have is a four-unit townhouse construction, two and a half stories, each unit containing three bedrooms. To the mean slope of the roof, we have 25 feet above average grade plane. Each unit contains a little over 1,500 square feet on all three floors, and the footprint of the building is approximately 2,050 square feet. For architectural interest, we've put different claddings on, on the front of the building, so there's a mix of actually three different types of cladding. There's a shake style, there is a traditional clapboard style, and then there is also a wide clapboard style. And those are also in different colors, again, to help give it some visual interest along the streetscape. We're anticipating using an architectural grade shingle, so that would be very, very much in keeping with the architectural vernacular in the area. That's pretty much it. It's a nice, simple building. Any questions, I'll be happy to...
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Phil. So that should provide the board with a pretty good overview of the proposal. The applicant's investing about a million and a half dollars into this site. The investment will significantly enhance the character of the neighborhood. Project also aligns with the city's master plan and sustainable goal 2025. The effects of the proposed use will not outweigh any beneficial impacts to the city or the neighborhood, and we hope that the board will agree with us and approve the request for a special permit and site plan approval this evening. But again, we're happy to answer any questions that the board may have. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. At this point in time, I'll turn it over to the public. Anybody like to speak in favor of this project? In favor? In favor? In favor? Hearing none? Anybody like to speak in opposition? In opposition? In opposition? Hearing none? This time, I'll turn it over to the board members if they have any questions?
I do have a question.
Sure, go ahead, Caleb.
So, my understanding that there will be no trees planted in the rear, because they have been moved to the front? Am I correct? So if I missed something?
There is ample landscaping area back there, you saw by the green area. We didn't provide any, any, any formal trees or any landscaping plan. If you're the homeowners or the property owners can do that accordingly. We did take the trees and jockey them to the front, so you are correct.
Okay, got it. I know that like, it's kind of on a step up from the market. Like, I parked on Perry Street the other day, so, so I'm wondering, the rear of the building, is that going to have similar textures in terms, I mean, architectural-wise? Or is it going to be a little bit more simple?
Architecturally, it'd be a simpler building. I believe that we're only showing a traditional clapboard style in the back and on the side.
Which is the, the red?
That, I believe so.
Oh, okay, I see. And, and there will be a kind of balcony, or not balcony, but like a...
There's a, there's a rear, there's a deck on the back of the building off the first level.
Okay.
Some steps down.
Got it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, any questions or comments?
Fran, did the DPD landscape design look, I just, it looks like it's, the unit, well, I guess, did we establish it was Unit 4? It looks like it's closer to the street than Unit 1, and it just, you know, there's, there's a matter of fact, we were at the Lowell Master Plan Meeting and they showed a condo development on Lauren Street, and it had a nice stone wall in front of it, but the funny thing is, that's not what the planning board approved. It was actually to have street trees, and the space was just not big enough to really accommodate it as much as we would have liked it. So I'm just curious if, if that was looked at, just, just to see if that's, because I think if you lose the rhythm of the whole idea of the four trees, I'm just curious if that was, that was looked at.
We did not take a look at that, but we certainly can.
Yeah, that would be a concern I have, just looking at that.
We're happy to condition any approval upon final approval of the landscape plan by DPD.
Right. No, I know, I guess it's just, the idea is, is if that's not...
Your concern is we may not have the, the room to plant the trees?
For the tree to survive.
For the tree to survive.
Yeah, no, that's, just looking at, and again, once again, Counselor, I haven't looked at that landscape plan. I'm seeing that for the first time.
Yeah.
So, I, I...
A lot of what we're trying to utilize is what they call a, I have it written on the plan, I have to come up and tell you.
Well, you can take a look.
You can approach.
Yeah, that's fine.
We have no problem with that.
It's a, what do you call it? Narrow road vehicles, which actually grow a lot of power, that are typical trees. So if it is utilized, if it is utilized in these technical areas, you're right. Correct, right. Tightest route, as you come solving it, a little bit of room there. You can actually, if you're trying to make this, maybe flop it to the other side, and right against that side of the building, you run the driveway, the vehicle there. So if you do feel that, that, and so on...
Okay.
Might have to take a little more of a clear...
Right, right. Right. Because it would detract a little bit if, if it doesn't, because the whole idea is to create that rhythm that's there, but yeah, okay.
What we still, I believe the trees, if you said that, we've still some of the other stories, some of the bushes and whatnot.
Yep.
Right. Not much of it's underscored, but I try to have that, along the street.
Right, right. No, I mean visually, counsel, it's very rare we have two projects that come before us the same night, and visually, they look very pleasing, so it's, you know, this project and the prior project, so it's nice to see that.
Both in a portion of this neighborhood that could use some softening to it.
Sure, yeah, no, absolutely. Yeah, no question about that. And, and again, we talk about streetscape all the time, so I think that was a good addition. It's just that my, my concern is the, the ability for that last tree to survive, and, but I guess we can deal with that as we go. And it looks like the stairs going down to those three parking spots, there's no walk that connects those stairs, it just comes up into the, into the grassy area, is that...
Right, right, I mean, we can...
Is that practical? I mean, in the wintertime?
Yeah, maybe perhaps not, so that's something we certainly could incorporate into the design.
Yeah, I think it'd have to, I mean, I, again, somebody's parking there in the wintertime, were you going to shovel over the grass?
That's a good point.
Yeah, it's just not gonna... So I think we really should add a side, you know, walk that connects that, those stairs to the, to the structure, to the building. Are they going to be assigned to a particular unit off to that side? Is that...
Perhaps, you know, we're, we're assigning the two tandem spaces to that unit to the far right facing the building.
Yeah.
You know, I, I guess it, there'll be six spaces on the, on the south side for the other three units, so, you know, it may be that they're, they end up being guest parking, you know?
Gotcha, yeah.
So no, the, the intent is not to specifically assign those spaces.
That's fine, yeah.
Yeah.
Understood, okay. Now, is that going to be in the form of an easement? Is that going to be in the form of a...
The property is owned by...
So if the property is sold, is it going to go with the project, or...
Yeah, it, sure. It's not going to be in the form of an easement, more likely a lease.
Okay, so it's not really going to run with the property? Without those three parking spots, Counsel, what do we have for...
We, so the, DPD came up with the calculation of nine spaces. We came up with 11 because we had an additional curb cut. So that's how we arrived at the 11 spaces, nine plus two. So we, we're providing eight on-site
Yep.
parking spaces, two per dwelling unit.
Yep.
These, you know, will likely be in excess, there'll all be, also be some street, on-street parking
Yep, okay.
in front of the structure, so I think that the
Understood.
the proposal will, will have sufficient parking however we cut it.
Okay. Okay. Yeah, because those aren't going to run with the property, it's just going to be a lease, but I, I can, if, we've got, we've got two person, although, again, we're doing bedroom count, too, so...
So the applicant intends, by the way, to hold the property.
Oh, I understand that, I understand that, but...
You never, yeah, things...
You're, you're an attorney, you understand. Okay. All right, no, I think it's a great project. I think it's, I think it's going to add and soften the, over there, and, you know, getting visually, it's very attractive, so, good, thank you.
I only have one question, Phil. Looking at the top little cut-ins here, are they slanted down or are they flat? See, these little...
Or the roof in the...
Yeah, you see how it comes down and it cuts in?
The main roof is a sloped roof, so
Yeah, because...
The portions that you see between the dormers are sloped roofs.
Okay, because I know a lot of times, what you do is you get a collection of birds in all of these. I see those on a lot of the old Victorians in the city.
Oh, yeah.
You look up and there's all your nests. Well, usually, you find the droppings down here before you look up.
Right, right.
So I didn't know if there's, if that was preventable, I mean, I think it looks nice, but I look at them like, I know a few friends of mine who have houses there.
So they're not very large, and certainly, we could put a treatment there to...
Yeah, I'm just thinking, you know, because, because if they're up that high, you really don't want somebody on the ladder going up to try to remove them.
Yeah.
But besides that, I like to look at it, but I've had people, friends of mine who had problems with that, where they, because they'll cut you their way right in there. But if, that's why I didn't know if it was flat or on a slant and prevent them, or whichever way you could just fix it up a little bit so you wouldn't encounter that problem, because it can turn into a musty problem. Besides that, I like it, but, no, the design looks good. And I have no further questions. I think all of them have been answered by either the applicant or the questions by the board. Because you look at it today, it was just, hard to look at a site, it was just all big green space, you know, coming over the fence and
Yeah.
You know, you're like...
Yeah, overgrown site.
Yeah, you know, if you're looking at it, so you really didn't get a good look at what the whole site looked like, you know?
No, I think the rendering goes a long way of showing us what it will look like there, and very important for these projects.
Yeah, yeah.
One question. I see the white fence behind it, so that's what, is it more for illustration or more, that is actually what's proposed?
That is just a tool from the illustrator to
Oh, okay.
essentially give you a termination of where the site is.
So, so a question on that. So the drop in the back with the staircase, how tall is the drop? Like, do you need a fence on the edge, or do you not?
Yeah, that wall will be tall enough, it will need fall protection, so there'll be some type of fencing along that wall, correct?
Okay, and...
The other two sides, if you notice, are kind of right up close to the, the abutting buildings, so really, a fence can kind of get lost in that
Got it.
in that treatment with the buildings, but yeah, we will need something on the backside.
So would it be more of a privacy or a picket fence? Just curious, what might be the thought?
Well, I mean, it's, it's more for a practical standpoint, the building inspector in order to issue a building permit for that wall would need some type of fall protection. So it would be, have to be more than just like a split rail fence.
Oh, I see.
Some type of, of fall protection, so more than likely, some type of picket fence or privacy type fence.
I see, yeah. Okay, thank you.
That would be typically something we'd like to see, though, and I have some idea what, what that would, what type of...
But maybe they would need a review by the engineer, so could DPD do that alongside with a landscaping plan?
What was the question?
They're going to put some sort of a, they're going to need to put some sort of fence on the top of the, the wall in the back, the elevation where it drops down to those other three parking spaces at the rear of the property.
You're asking if DPD would review that? Yes.
Yeah, I mean, typically, we would get into the material and what it's going to look like and, you know...
That's very fair.
I mean, what's in here looks good, but I know that wasn't intended to reflect what's actually going to be on there.
It's a very good rendering.
So it might make sense to, you know, condition the approval upon DPD review and approval of the final landscape plan.
Yeah, no, again, I'm concerned about that, the tree, and then, and then just, and also, I would add a, some sort of a connecting walkway to those
Yes, I agree with that.
Yeah.
Okay, so, a request for the site plan and a special permit? What's the request of the board?
Mr. Requested aboard.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the site plan with the following conditions, that the applicant add a connecting walkway to the stairs from the condo development to the stairs to the rear of the property, accessing the three parking spaces below, and the, subject to DPD staff approving, reviewing, and approving the final landscape plan, with the concern of the street trees, the feasibility of their survivability, and the DPD review and approve the final fencing that will run along the rear of the property to address the elevation change.
Do we need anything more for stormwater, or we all set?
I mean, we certainly can do, like, as a formality, again, as mentioned, they have to get that anyways, but certainly, subject to stormwater approval.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, the motion carries, three in favor, none against? That's for the site plan. Now, we need approval, request for the special permit?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the special permit incorporating the, all of the conditions that were placed on the site plan.
I'll second the motion. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye, so motion carries, three in favor, none against?
Good luck and wish you well.
Thank you, thank you all for your time.
Yep. Let us know when you're done with me, we'll come up and take a good look at both of them.
We won't have to drive far.
No, I said, they're right in the same neighborhood, so.
Looks good.
Yeah, select. Thank you very much, good luck.
Okay, moving along on our agenda, we have any other, any other business, any further comments from board members?
Mr. Chairman, can I just, to Fran, just on the topic of the tree hearings, I know we've approved several in the past where it was conditional upon either additional trees being planted, or some funds being put aside for, and I know it's all kinds of motions you guys are responding to, but is there any way we can get some sort of accounting of what's happened in the past on those?
Yes, yeah, so that is on our to-do list. We want to, we were for a long time keeping track in an Excel sheet of all of the trees. Actually, I don't know that I have the spreadsheet anymore. It was in my network drive that I can't access right now.
Oh, boy, okay.
But we could start from scratch, it will just take more time. It's going to take a while, I'll be honest, because of how much work we are, Dylan and I are trying to plow through, but it is our full intention to keep track of everything. We actually want to develop an application with like, clear requirements for whether it's the city of Lowell that's seeking to remove the trees, or a private person-
Sure.
-have an application and then keep track of it, just like we do. We do that for all of our boards, we keep track of everything in the spreadsheet, so we want to do the same for the tree hearings, so that we can keep track of everything, like you said, and make sure that the trees that are supposedly planted as replacement trees are actually-
Yeah, that's my concern, we're removing, you know, when I think about it now, we've actually removed a lot of trees.
Right.
And, you know, I just concerned that, you know, at least we're tracking whether or not they're getting replaced.
Absolutely. It's on our radar, too.
Yeah, okay.
And we've talked to the director of DPD and the deputy director about it, so it's on their radar, too, so it will, yeah, we will be following up on that.
Okay, all right, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Any further comments, anybody? Anything from staff? No?
I do have an update, so on May 31st, we had a housing forum, public workshop for the Lowell Forward Comprehensive Plan Update. Remember, Frishat was there. It was really great. It was more like discussion-based, we had people sitting at tables, and I thought it was really successful, so that was really exciting. And then, we have an upcoming workshop on June 21st that will focus on growth strategies, so trying to identify, kind of playing off of what we did with the mapping activity, yeah, just growth strategies, how the city of Lowell residents and community members would like to see us grow in the future, areas where we would like to see more density, areas where we would like to be a little bit more incremental, growth related to mobility So, yeah, it should be a good event.
So, I was just thinking growth, when I heard that, so it's more, it's still in housing and development in that framework, or is it economic growth? Is it?
I think it's the other, because we had a whole, I just use density as an example, like housing density as an example, but this workshop, and I, we have a meeting about it tomorrow, so I will see with more details tomorrow what UTL has developed, but I believe that the intention is to focus more on the other elements of a master plan other than housing. Housing is obviously part of everything, but focusing more on, yeah, economic development, mobility.
Right.
I think those two in particular.
Yeah, okay, because I mean, that's, again, part of affordability of housing is, if we have more economic opportunities.
Absolutely.
Guess what? We start to solve another issue.
It's all connected.
Yeah, I just, when I, when I heard growth, even in my mind, I was like, hmm, and then because, as you say, you choose density as a word, I'm like, wait a minute.
It's easy, it's the easiest example, but it will probably focus more on the other elements, though housing is, we can't remove housing from the equation. It will not be focused, like, predominantly on housing like this most recent workshop was.
Specifically this past one for housing, yeah.
Exactly, yeah. So, I believe that's it.
No, it was, it was good, I think it was about 50 people there, I counted, and I just, a public announcement, just, you know, folks, you got to show up, come to these meetings. I know there are plenty of notices going out there, everybody's doing a good job trying to get the word out, and, but people have to show up. I'm still not seeing a lot of average residents show up. I'm seeing people involved in organizations and advocates, but I'm not seeing a lot of average citizens come out, so that's, there's some, but, boy, you got to come out, because it's just, as things start to develop from the plan, people will wonder how, how did we get here? And well, you know, we were looking for people to get involved, so now's the time to speak up, get involved.
Participate in the democratic process that is planning.
Yeah, absolutely, yeah.
Anybody else have any further comments? If not, we have a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned, good night and thank you, everyone.